Bienvenidos al diseño público de este viernes para el proyecto Downtown Lower Broadway, con los diversos intersecciones mejoras en Chelsea, Massachusetts. Mi nombre es Lawrence Cash. Soy el gerente de proyectos del departamento de Transportes de Massachusetts, División de Rutas de Boston. Su atenencia a este audiencia será formalmente registrada. Una vez que la audiencia termine, la lista de atenencias se convertirá en parte del registro público para la audiencia, así que si usted quiere que su atenencia a la audiencia se convierta en parte del registro, entonces por favor inscriba en frente, cerca de la puerta de frente. También hay un manual ubicado junto a la lista de inscripción. El manual también está publicado en el sitio web de MassDOT. También a este tiempo me gustaría presentar a uno de nuestros traductores presente este viernes. Está en la parte de atrás, tenemos a Ursula Alarcon. Antes de entrar en la presentación del proyecto, cubriremos un par de slides para las grabaciones de audiencia y la diversidad y derechos civiles.
Gracias, Larry. Solo tengo unos pocos slides de casa tras eso. Así que como pueden ver, esta reunión está siendo grabada. Continuando a participar en este diseño público de audiencia, ustedes están consentiendo ser grabados. Si no están cómodos siendo grabados, ustedes pueden excusarse de la reunión. También quiero notar que después de la presentación formal, habrá una sesión de preguntas y respuestas, así que tendrá la oportunidad de hacer preguntas del equipo de proyecto. También puede enviar una pregunta en línea. Tenemos un sitio web al que puede ir, tiny.cc/chelseacomments, o puede enviar un comentario escrito allí. Hay algunas hojas a las que puede enviar comentarios al equipo de programación también. También quiero notar que todas las actividades de Mass, incluyendo audiencias públicas, son gratuitas. Si tienen preguntas o preocupaciones, puede visitar nuestro sitio web y contactar la oficina de Diversidad y Derechos Civiles. Debería ser la dirección aquí en la pantalla.
Voy a comenzar presentando a los miembros del panel de audiencia para esta presentación de este viernes. En frente aquí tenemos a Joe Doucette, del Departamento de Distrito 6 de MassDOT. Tenemos a Angela Schofield, del departamento de Derechos Civiles municipales de MassDOT. También desde la ciudad de Chelsea tenemos a Alex Train. Y tenemos a Jormin Moda, como dije, con la ciudad de Chelsea. Y tenemos a Jonathan Capas y Patrick Martin, que acaban de conocerse desde HNTV, que ayudarán a MassDOT con los servicios consultorios de diseño. También durante la pregunta y respuesta, si tienen alguna pregunta sobre el MDTA Transit, también tenemos a Robert Poopthill. Y finalmente tenemos a nuestro fotógrafo Melissa Lupo, tomando el transcripto prohibido de esta audiencia. Antes de entrar en la audiencia, me gustaría ahora preguntar si hay algunos funcionarios electos presentes este viernes que quieran hablar en adelante a este tiempo. Puede hablar ahora brevemente solo para una declaración de abertura, o más tarde en la presentación antes de abrir la audiencia al público. Ok, pasando adelante. El diseño público de audiencia ha sido anunciado de varias maneras. La notificación de audiencia ha sido anunciada en el registro de Chelsea y en el Al Planeta el 23 de febrero y el 2 de marzo. La notificación de este diseño público de audiencia también está publicada en el sitio web de MassDOT. Finalmente, la ciudad de Chelsea ha ayudado a coordinar la audiencia pública al publicar la información en su página de Facebook, el sitio web de la ciudad y cuentas de Twitter. Una copia de esta notificación está en el manual y estará adjunta en el transcripto final de la audiencia. Si quieren retirar el manual electrónicamente, por favor use el código QR mostrado en la pantalla y también mostrado en el flyer de audiencia pública donde las copias están ubicadas cerca de la lista de inscripción. Se encontrará documentación que será útil para ustedes en la comprensión del proyecto y en la presentación de comentarios formales en respuesta a esta presentación. Ahora, para la presentación de esta noche, la agenda incluirá lo siguiente. Estaremos revisando la iniciación del proyecto y el propósito de la área del proyecto, las alternativas consideradas, dadas las condiciones existentes y los objetivos del proyecto, la alternativa preferida mostrando las mejoras propuestas. Hablaremos de bicicleta y pedestrians y el camino de entrada y el permiso ambiental. Impresiones de construcción y el enfoque para la construcción. Y luego finalmente abrir la audiencia para algunas preguntas y respuestas. Esta será su oportunidad de hacer preguntas, proporcionar feedback o buscar clarificación de cualquier material de presentación. Su feedback es importante para nosotros y certamente nos encanta y apreciamos su participación este viernes. Ahora, en términos de la historia del proyecto y el cronograma, este proyecto fue iniciado por el estado coordinando con la ciudad, identificando la ubicación de Downtown Lower Broadway como parte de un programa de mejora de seguridad de carreteras, grupo de bicicleta y de bicicleta entre los períodos de 2008 y 2017. En marzo de 2018, la reimaginación de Broadway estudiada por Nelson Nygaard fue publicada. En abril de 2019, la auditoría de seguridad de la carretera fue completada por HNTV en coordinación con MassDOT y la ciudad. En 2020, el piloto de autobuses temporales en la autopista fue implementado a lo largo de la carretera Broadway. En 2021, 22, el diseño del 25% fue enviado a MassDOT para revisión. Actualmente estamos terminando la etapa del diseño del 25%, lo que significa que después de esta audiencia, avanzaremos el proyecto hacia una submisión del 75% a 100% y luego a la submisión final del diseño. estimamos que el costo de construcción será aproximadamente 7.4 millones de dólares, que vendrán de financiación federal, con la Administración Federal de Carreteras financiando el 8% y MassDOT financiando el 20% restante. Este proyecto debe programarse en el programa de mejora de la infraestructura estatal y el año fiscal federal apropiado para solicitar fondos de construcción por MassDOT. El total costo participativo federal de este proyecto no incluye ningún costo adquisitivo de camino de entrada. Ahora, el gráfico a la derecha de la pantalla es una vista aérea de los límites del proyecto. El proyecto tiene aproximadamente una mitad de milla de longitud. Se muestran siete intersecciones en los círculos destacados. Comenzando desde el fondo, hay la segunda calle en Broadway, hay Everett Ave y Cross Street en Broadway. Y luego avanzando, hay la tercera calle en Congress Avenue en Broadway. Y luego hay la cuarta calle en Broadway. Y luego Washington Ave, Bellingham y Quinta calle en Broadway. Y luego Washington Ave en City Hall Ave y City Hall Ave y Marbelle Street ubicado en la parte superior. Ahora a este tiempo me gustaría tener a Alex Train cubrir algunos puntos sobre el proyecto.
Gracias, Larry. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Alex Train y sirvo como director de vivienda y desarrollo de la comunidad de la ciudad de Chelsea. Tengo a mi colega Jormin Moda aquí, ingeniero de sistema de la ciudad. Y en conjunto con el departamento de trabajos públicos, nuestro departamento ha estado liderando los esfuerzos para modernizar la infraestructura a través del centro de la ciudad para mejorar la visibilidad de la comunidad de pequeños negocios, ameliorar problemas de seguridad, incluyendo muchos problemas de seguridad de pedestrians y vehículos a través de la ciudad, así como mejorar el acceso al transporte público y aumentar su confiabilidad, con la ciudad siendo un punto principal de congestión para nuestro sistema de autobuses local que muchos residentes confían. Así que, casi cuatro años atrás ahora, la ciudad inició un proceso de planificación para explorar diferentes tipos de mejoras de infraestructura en la ciudad con un equipo de consultoría. Y finalmente, a través de los comentarios que escuchamos de los residentes, así como de la comunidad de pequeños negocios, la ciudad, en conjunto con nuestros socios de base de comunidad, inició este proyecto con MassDOT para identificar y asegurar el financiamiento necesario para dar a cabo muchos de estos aportes de seguridad y mejora de los transitos. Así que la ciudad actual está envelopada por numerosos grupos de colisiones, incluyendo intersecciones que son algunas de las intersecciones más peligrosas a través del estado. Debido a la confluencia de actividad de pedestrians relacionada con los negocios de la ciudad y las escuelas locales, combinado con mucho de la actividad de los transitos que ven, ha resultado en mayores problemas de seguridad debido a que la carretera original, diseñada en los años 70, no estaba diseñada para facilitar el paso seguro para los drivers o pedestrians. Y así, como parte de este proyecto, hablaremos de esto en detalle en unos momentos. Estamos realmente buscando coger en muchos de los grupos que ven envelopados en verde y azul en la pantalla. Estos son lugares donde han habido numerosos colisiones involucrando vehículos, así como accidentes involucrando pedestrians. Y con más de 2,800 personas atravesando el corredor, caminando a los negocios locales, iglesias y sus escuelas cada día, asegurándose de que los pedestrians puedan moverse seguros a través de la ciudad y asegurándose de que los residentes puedan acceder a los transitos públicos confiables, que son dos de nuestros principales objetivos. Así que para iniciar este proyecto, la ciudad, en conjunto con socios de base de comunidad, tomó algo llamado auditoría de seguridad de la carretera para realmente entregar todos esos problemas de seguridad que juegan en la ciudad. Y a través de este proceso en 2019, el equipo revisó datos existentes sobre los colisiones, incluyendo datos del departamento de la policía de Chelsea, realizó visitas de sitio con ingenieros, planeros urbanos y líderes de la comunidad para observar cómo la ciudad se usa ahora mismo y cuáles son muchos de esos problemas de seguridad actualmente. Y luego a través de este curso de estas conversaciones, también desarrollamos estrategias que podemos implementar en el corto y largo plazo para mejorar la seguridad para los residentes, así como para aumentar la confiabilidad del transporte público y disminuir la congestión y la contaminación del aire. Una de las partes principales notables sobre la ciudad, como muchos de ustedes saben, es el hecho de que consiste de una larga extensión de cinco bloques con muchos intersecciones a lo largo de la calle que no tienen luces de parada y no están realmente controlados ahora mismo. Y así, muchos de los colisiones que vemos en la ciudad involucrando vehículos son a menudo colisiones de trasero y muchos de los problemas de seguridad de los pedestrians, los pedestrians que realmente no pueden caminar seguros a través de los intersecciones. Y así, con esos trazos de seguridad en mente, iniciamos este proyecto y esos han continuado a guiar el diseño que verán esta noche. Así que con más de cinco principales líneas de transito atravesando la ciudad, incluyendo tres rutas de autobuses MDTA de alta frecuencia, la ciudad incluye numerosas paradas de autobuses que son algunas de las más ocupadas y activas en la red MDTA. Y estos incluyen las paradas de autobuses en Bellingham Square, Hawthorne Street y Washington Ave, así como paradas de autobuses ubicadas en Broadway. Una de las consideraciones clave que la ciudad y nuestros socios de base de comunidad hicieron como parte del plan original era sobre instalaciones que podrían mejorar el servicio de autobuses para los residentes, especialmente los residentes dependientes del 111, el 116 y el 117. Así que a través de un programa de pilotaje durante los últimos dos años, la ciudad ha instituido una lane dedicada a autobuses a través de la ciudad que se extiende desde City Hall hasta Everett Ave. Y también hemos comenzado a evaluar las mejoras a las paradas de autobuses, así como los potenciales señales de tráfico en intersecciones que podrían dar a esos autobuses el camino de entrada, como se ilustra en la presentación de esta noche. Muchos de los autobuses ahora no son capaces de alcanzar completamente el paradero en estas paradas de autobuses, lo que hace que sea increíblemente difícil para los residentes con discapacidad de acceso a los autobuses. Además, los autobuses suele sentarse en tráfico, en particular en tráfico involucrando autos cruzando estas intersecciones incontroladas, lo que aún más demora a los que simplemente usan el autobús para ir a trabajo o para caminar en el área de Boston. Y luego, finalmente, como ven a diario, muchos de estos autobuses incluyen muros que han deteriorado y generalmente superficies desiguales que no son adecuadas para los residentes con discapacidad de acceso, los senadores o otros gente con impedimentos de movilidad. Y así, como parte de este gran proyecto, esperábamos reconstruir todos los paraderos de la ciudad, incluyendo estos autobuses, haciendo que sean más grandes y cómodos para los que esperan el autobús y asegurándose de que sean accesibles para todos los que dependen de sus habilidades. Con eso, voy a pasarle a Jonathan, uno de nuestros ingenieros de HNTV.
Vamos a pasarlo a este lado. Está bien para la cabeza. Así que como escucharon de Alex, este proyecto es acerca de mejorar la seguridad. Ese es el objetivo número uno de este proyecto. Habrá cortos paraderos, intersecciones, paradas de autobuses más grandes, nuevas instalaciones de bicicleta. Como dijeron, los paraderos de muro se van a deshacer, habrá paraderos combinados ADA y rampas curvas. Y generalmente, una red de carreteras más simple alrededor de City Hall también. Esto permite más cruzar directamente a lo largo de las líneas deseadas. Esto es realmente importante para un área donde una en tres personas toman transporte de trabajo y la mitad de la gente se maneja a trabajar. Así que pensamos que es importante tener un balance realmente fuerte aquí para todos los modos. Y independientemente de si caminan o en bicicleta o en autobús o en auto, en algún momento todo el mundo sale de su automóvil o sale del autobús o de su bicicleta y tiene que caminar de un punto a otro. Así que todo el mundo se vuelve un pedestriano en algún momento. Así que la seguridad de los pedestrians es un objetivo muy grande de este proyecto. Así que ¿dónde estamos ahora? La ciudad implementó el autobús en 2020, como Larry mencionó, con curvas rápidas de ampliación para más espacio en las paradas de autobuses. Y funcionó muy bien. Así que fueron permanentemente aprobados por el consejo de la ciudad. Sin embargo, parecen haber sido construidos muy rápido. Así que eso va a ser codificado como parte de este proyecto. ¿Cuáles fueron las alternativas consideradas? La reimaginación de Broadway estudiada que Alex habló sobre tenía cuatro intersecciones alternativas para Broadway. Y vamos a pasarlos muy rápidamente. Alternativa 1 tiene una autopista con bujías. Y también reduce la carretera. Lo que no proporcionó fue instalaciones de autobuses mejoras. Como pueden ver, el verde es específicamente para bicicletas. La alternativa también reduciría el parking en el corredor. Y el mantenimiento de la cantidad de parking en este área con muchos residencias y negocios es muy importante también para los objetivos del proyecto. La próxima alternativa es una lane de autobuses y motos compartida, muy similar a lo que es parte del autobús. Esto no reduce el parking en general en el corredor. Sin embargo, no proporciona una instalación de motos dedicada. La alternativa 3 fue una lane de motos protegida con bujías. Y es una lane de motos protegida de parking, así que las bicicletas son protegidas de los autos viajando con autos parados. Sin embargo, al empujar a los autos fuera, terminas disminuyendo una cantidad significativa de parking como parte de la alternativa. Y luego la última alternativa fue agregar una lane de motos protegida usando el parking, pero no reduciendo la carretera, así que todavía tendría dos lances como hizo antes del autobús. Los paraderos en esta alternativa todavía son bastante largos. No proporciona ningún beneficio de autobuses mejorados y la alternativa mantendría... Pero la alternativa mantendría el parking en general. Así que esos fueron los cuatro alternativas. Lo que este proyecto se ha resuelto no es una alternativa específica, sino más bien, dependiendo de dónde estés en el corredor, dos alternativas separadas. Así que vamos a pasarlos ahora mismo. Desde City Hall Ave hasta la tercera calle, lo que tienes es lo que era parte del autobús construido en una configuración permanente. Así que tenemos esa lane de autobuses y motos aquí en el medio y la lane de conducción de 11 metros, parking en ambos lados con bujías que actualmente no están ahí en un sentido formal. Y luego hay paraderos en el otro lado, que el muro se reemplazará con concreto. Y luego a la sur de eso, o perdón, a la occidente de eso, tenemos, una vez que todos los autobuses se apagan a sus diferentes direcciones, así que el 111 se dirige hacia el viaducto y todos los otros autobuses se vuelven a la tercera calle. Tenemos una lane de motos con bujías en ambos lados que protege a los ciclistas y los autos cuando abres tu puerta. También proporciona suficiente espacio para que estés parando que estás fuera de la línea de viaje, así que no estás atrapando el tráfico detrás de ti, no sientes el estrés de eso. Así que podemos profundizar un poco más en lo que han sido las mejoras hasta el momento. Básicamente sería una visión de todo el corredor. Has visto la intersección. Vamos a ver cómo se ve el plan real. Está dividido de la misma manera que los dos paraderos eran. Así que esta primera sección aquí es William Street hasta Congress y la tercera. Y puedes ver la lane de motos en el verde, justo ahí a través de las intersecciones y luego separada. Vamos un poco más cerca para que puedas verlo ahí, corriendo a lo largo de ese borde. Lo que es un poco diferente en esta configuración de lo que hay hoy así como en esta sección aquí, formalizamos los movimientos de la lane para los vehículos y estarán protegidos, estarán flashando becas donde actualmente no están. Muchos de los intersecciones puedes ver también con todo el azul, ese es el paradero. Puedes ver cuánto reduce la carretera en los corners de intersección. Pasando hacia City Hall, puedes ver que la lane de autobuses está ahí ahora con el rojo que estoy seguro que todos están familiarizados con en este punto. Y luego en Bellingham Square es donde ocurre el cambio realmente grande. Así que ahora mismo tienes que ir todo el camino hacia Belling, hacia Hawthorne, hacia Broadway, alrededor de City Hall, hacia Washington y de vuelta hacia Broadway. Esta intersección va a convertirse en una intersección señalizada con movimientos completos que también permitirán cruzar donde realmente quisieras cruzar en primer lugar. No tienes que caminar todo el camino por la red o caminar en parada o lo que sea en cualquier momento. Así que ese es el layout básico. Vamos a hacer algunos blowups ahora de puestos individuales para que te dé una idea de qué son las mejoras en varias intersecciones. Así que por debajo de Chelsea Square, puedes ver que vamos a instalar rectangulares de flash de becas. Ese pequeño puente que ves en el lado izquierdo de la pantalla aquí. Eso es un beca activado de botones que da a la persona el aviso de que estás cruzando la calle. También puedes ver que la intersección, el cruzamiento está reducido con esas curvas. Pasando hacia la segunda calle, aquí puedes ver la lane de motos pasando por la intersección y muy visible con el pintado verde. También puedes ver esas curvas de extensión nuevamente. Y todas las intersecciones que no tienen señales de tráfico tendrán un beca flash sobre ellos señalizando que la calle menor o la calle lateral tiene que parar, enfatizando esa condición de parar y un beca azul flash para mostrar que el tráfico que se mueve en Broadway debería moverse más lento y estar consciente del tráfico de cruzar. Nuevamente, los paraderos en cruzar en intersecciones y especialmente en las paradas de autobuses. Así que hicimos, como parte del piloto, ampliamos esos. Esto formalizará eso y lo construirá como parte del paradero, así que no es, como dijo Alex, así que los paraderos mismos sean compliantes ADA desde el interior de los edificios, o la parte de la frente de los edificios hasta la parte de la frente del paradero. Así que en Bellingham Square, vamos a pasar un poco de tiempo en esto aquí y luego tenemos algunos renderings de la intersección también que te mostrarán los movimientos que tomas. Pero empezaremos con este aquí. Así que, como todos ustedes están familiarizados ahora mismo, y voy a caminar por este. Ahora mismo vas a través, ya sea de este lado aquí o de ese lado ahí. Y si te encuentras aquí y quieres ir a la Quinta calle, tienes que ir todo el camino. O viceversa, tratando de llegar a Bellingham. No es lo más fácil de navegar. Si estás cruzando, tus paraderos no están donde esperas que sean y no puedes realmente cruzar en el medio de la misma plaza. Así que lo que hace esto es crear una intersección formal señalizada. Se permite mover en todas las direcciones, así que desde Washington Street hasta Broadway, desde Hawthorne Street hasta Broadway en ambas direcciones y desde both Hawthorne and Washington hasta la Quinta, Bellingham también. Los paraderos están configurados para que sea una head phase exclusiva, lo que significa que los pedestrians podrán ir a todas las locaciones al mismo tiempo sin que ninguno de los autos se mueva en ninguna de las... en ninguna de las acercaciones a la intersección. Y luego algunos serán concurrentes dependiendo de qué señal de tráfico es verde en cualquier momento. La otra parte de esto, como puedes ver aquí, es que Broadway ha cambiado de ser un camino de una manera a un camino de dos frente a City Hall. Así que ahora mismo en City Hall Ave, todos tienen que turnar hacia City Hall Ave. Y eso va a cambiar y se convertirá en dos, así que no tendrás que ir todo el camino por la red para llegar a Broadway, solo seguirás corriendo directo. También habrá una conexión de las instalaciones de bicicleta que están... que se detienen justo en City Hall Ave, así que se conectará todo el camino desde Williams hasta Chelsea Greenway. Finalmente, Face Square, como parte del RSA, una de las cosas que se identificó fue cuán informalizado fue esta intersección. Las mejoras fueron, las mejoras a corto plazo fueron rápidamente tomadas por la ciudad y salieron pintadas en locaciones para que la gente pudiera entrar. Pero estoy seguro de que todos ustedes han visto que eso ha desaparecido con el tiempo porque la gente ha ido a la pintura y los pílons han caído o la gente los está metiendo y demás. Es una solución a corto plazo. Este proyecto formalizará esa solución a corto plazo con curvas de extensión y puedes ver que va a ser una gran plaza allí. Para todas estas intersecciones, tomamos en cuenta los movimientos de vehículos de emergencia y autobuses. Así que no habrá ninguna posibilidad de que corran por la curva o estar en una posición comprometida tratando de pasar por alguna de las intersecciones. Eso es particularmente importante aquí porque la estación de fuego está justo en el corner. Así que hemos tomado todos esos movimientos en cuenta y incluso cuando lleguemos a la construcción algún día, estoy seguro de que pondremos algunos conos para que les dé un pase antes de que se ponga en marcha. Así que ahora tenemos algunos renderings. Lo que estamos viendo aquí en Bellingham Square, estamos viendo hacia City Hall. Así que el gazebo está justo en el fondo ahí, en todos los colores bonitos. Hay Hawthorne, Broadway, Bellingham y Quinta calle. Así que, solo para orientarte, y luego vamos a pasar a los varios movimientos. Así que llegando a Broadway ahora, porque podrás ir directo a Broadway, puedes tomar un movimiento de paso, puedes turnar a la Quinta calle, o perdón, a la derecha. you can take a through movement, you can turn left onto Fifth Street, or sorry, right onto Fifth Street or left onto Hawthorne. Or Bellingham, sorry. Off of Washington Ave, you'll be able to make a right onto Fifth Street as you do today, continue onto Broadway as you do today. You'll be able to turn onto Broadway going up as you do today, but you'll also be able to turn onto Bellingham. And then Hawthorne, you'll be able to make an immediate U-turn back onto Broadway, go down Fifth, go down Bellingham, or continue onto Broadway. So all the movements that don't exist today on Hawthorne will now exist. Angela?
Thank you, Larry. When the Commonwealth acting through its Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division indicated it would accept this $7.4 million project funding, the City of Chelsea accepted certain responsibilities. One of these responsibilities is acquiring the necessary rights and private and public plans for the design, construction, and implementation of the project. My function is to review and recommend procedures that the City of Chelsea will use in acquiring these rights. The procedures used must comply with both federal and state regulations. Effective property owner's rights are protected under our Massachusetts General Laws, primarily Chapter 79. And because this project is receiving federal funds, the property owner's rights are further defined under Title III of the Real Property Act of 1970 as amended. The current design plans indicate that there are 65 temporary easements required. The property owners impacted by this project will be contacted by the City of Chelsea's municipal officials. They will present the imposed impacts to each owner and discuss the methods with which they may acquire the needed rights for the project. Frequently, municipalities will appeal for donations to minimize the acquisition cost for your community. However, donations are not. Okay, thank you. However, donations are not required. And property owners are entitled to appraisal, review appraisal, and just compensation. Right-of-way documents will be provided to each owner to help them understand the acquisition process and how the project affects their property. I will be available after the presentation to answer any questions you may have. Back to you, Larry.
Thank you. Now, Alex, once again, we'll talk a little about some of the architectural resources
Thank you, Larry. So as many of you know, downtown encompasses a major historic district, enveloping buildings of notable historic features as well as landmarks and grounds such as Chelsea Square, Bellingham Square, and the Civil War Monument. And so as part of this project, the city strives to preserve all of the architectural and historic resources throughout the downtown, while in unison with these improvements, planned improvements to Chelsea Square and Bellingham Square will occur. So during construction of this project, there will be temporary impacts on Bellingham Square and Chelsea Square in order to accommodate construction workers and the storage of materials. However, in parallel with this design process that you're seeing tonight, the city, in conjunction with our community-based partners, is undertaking the redesign of both Bellingham Square Plaza to make it a more inviting, hospitable space for residents, as well as historic refurbishment of Chelsea Square, which we hope to carry out in conjunction with this project. And so the goals of these projects, along with the downtown Broadway project, are ultimately to accentuate many of the historic characteristics of the downtown to ensure that they're preserved for future generations. Each of the properties throughout the downtown will be surveyed and reviewed as part of the historic review process for this project, and will be consulting with the Mass Historic Commission to ensure that the project's construction phase impacts don't adversely affect any buildings, landmarks, or historic sites throughout the downtown. This project will also require a Section 106 hearing, which will occur before our local Chelsea Historic Commission, so there'll also be opportunities to present and have members of the public weigh in about the preservation of historic resources and anything we can do during construction to ensure that buildings, landmarks, and other resources aren't adversely impacted. With that said though, this is a construction project, and the city is well aware that there could be considerable construction impacts, particularly on residents throughout the downtown as well as small business owners. And so as part of the project, we will be conducting an environmental justice analysis to ensure that there are sizable benefits for residents of Chelsea, particularly residents that are relying on public transit and are currently suffering the effects of air pollution and other negative impacts of Broadway and its existing state. Furthermore, we'll be looking at different measures to minimize and avoid those adverse impacts, as well as to eliminate potential environmental impacts during the project. And so things like protecting local waterways by ensuring that proper erosion control and sediment control measures are used on-site, as well as ensuring that there aren't any accidental issues pertaining to hazardous materials or needless air pollution from truck sidling are all things that we'll be looking at as part of this assessment. Furthermore, we are looking to talk with residents and understand, you know, at a personal level, how we can potentially carry out this project while minimizing impacts to your day-to-day lives. So in addition to this design public hearing, the city, Mass DOT, and HNTV will be holding a series of focus group meetings throughout the spring and summer to meet with the small business community, residents, as well as other key stakeholders to gather input about the project. As part of these conversations, we do hope to form a construction management plan that minimizes those disruptions that most construction projects carry. So we want to be conscious of the fact that with over 120 businesses in the downtown, simply losing parking spaces or having your sidewalk torn up all in front, you know, could spell disaster for your business. Similarly, with residents, we want to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, folks live right up above Broadway, so things like construction vehicles and noise associated with construction projects can be extremely, extremely disruptive. And so throughout the course of tonight's public hearing, as well as the subsequent focus groups and other public events, if folks have suggestions or if there are any considerations that we should be taking in order to minimize those impacts, we really look forward to speaking with you about those.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. Although this is not a part of tonight's design public hearing agenda, on behalf of the City of Chelsea and the Chelsea Department of Public Works, I would like to provide a brief overview of the utility infrastructure project that is designated as the first phase of a comprehensive transformation on downtown Broadway. This project will precede the traffic and surface enhancements that are being highlighted this evening. In support of a new streetscape design, these enhancements consist of water, sewer, drainage, and fiber optic improvements along the Broadway corridor and neighboring streets ranging from City Hall Avenue to Williams Street in the southern portion of the city. The city has secured several avenues of funding for this project, including an injection of $5 million from our city council, a $4 million grant awarded by the Mass Works and Infrastructure Program, just over $1.5 million in accumulated grants and loans from the MWRA, and as well as the securing of $2 million of a federal grant provided by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The total cost allotted from these funding sources is an estimated project cost of $12.6 million. At this moment in time, the design for the utility reconstruction project does stand at 100% completion. We anticipate carrying this contract through procurement and bidding through this, later this fall, so we aim for an estimated project start in March of 2024 with an estimated project duration between 18 to 22 months. With this project set to kick off next year, we look to implement the city's sewer and stormwater separation master plan, the installation of two new sewer mains servicing businesses, one on each side of the corridor, as well as the conversion of an existing combined sewer main on Broadway as a storm drain for added flood protection of the neighborhood. The installation of new fiber optic conduit along Broadway is proposed with the goal of providing better bandwidth to the public. This culminates with one of our largest efforts, which is to complete the replacement of water service lines that supply our businesses and residents. Some of the goals that we are targeting with this project are to reduce the efforts and effects of, I'm sorry, excuse me, effects of flooding in the general area. Secondly, to significantly reduce the amount of combined sewage flowing into the Mystic River currently, a critical step in eventually closing a combined sewer outfall with a concerted effort towards supplementing environmental resilience. In a high-demand area like downtown Broadway, we aim to minimize sewer backups with these improvements. A big piece of this effort to reduce sewer backups will be the inspection, cleaning, repair, or replacement of every sewer lateral in the project area. Lastly, I just wanted to reiterate the importance of providing a clean drinking water supply to the entire public, ensuring that any old pipe material that was previously used is completely replaced with entirely brand-new copper service lines connecting to each building. We eagerly strive for the accomplishments of these objectives as we anticipate that the transformation to have a positively significant economic impact in the heart of our city. Should anyone in the audience have any questions tonight regarding this utility work specifically? We have DPW officials, including myself, available tonight, and we're also joined by a member of our engineer consultant, Dewberry Engineers, who have worked tirelessly on the design of this project. Once this project has, once this presentation is finished, excuse me, please feel free to reach out to us tonight afterwards with any questions or comments that you might have regarding this project. Thank you very much.
So John covered the construction underground. I'm going to pick up where that project left off and cover how we're going to construct it up ground. So obviously, we are at the 25% design public hearing, and that means we're a little bit farther behind than the other project, the subsurface project in terms of our staging. The 25% brings us to a conceptual level of staging, but we have a general idea of how we're going to move forward with it. It'll all get detailed out after that. So generally, our lane closures are going to follow MassDOT standard requirements. However, the way we have it staged out is that every intersection itself is going to be constructed sequentially, so maybe one or two intersections happen at a time, and that way we're not reconstructing the entire roadway at once and causing havoc along the entire corridor. That'll preserve more parking for businesses during that time, and will keep the construction isolated as it moves along the corridor. Now, in general, the parking impacts will be minimized to the intersections where the bumpouts occur, right? So the long stretches in between each intersection, they don't need to take that parking unless they're reconstructing that sidewalk, which will be a shorter period of time between, compared to reconstructing each intersection. When they are not working, the plan is to have the contractors be required to park their vehicles away from Broadway and the sides, and the immediate side streets of Broadway. In addition, the contractors will be required to park their personal vehicles away from the Broadway corridor so that the contractor isn't taking up the space that's needed to conduct business and for the residents to get to and from their homes. We'll walk through the more complicated location for reconstruction, which is Bellingham. So in general, it'll be constructed in quadrants. This just gives you a general idea of how we will construct it. So we'll start by removing some of that infield dividing median that's there, and that'll open up more space for us to push traffic to the center. And then we'll construct the outsides, one side and then the other side. In the next stage after that, we'll do the other two corners, and then finally we'll reconstruct the center and then do a final pave in that area. During that time, there'll be probably some temporary signals involved, and then the final signal system will be in place. So Larry, next steps?
Yep, thank you, Jonathan. In terms of the next steps in the project, after tonight, we will consider any comments and proceed with the 75% design to be completed this year, and after that, we will move into the final design stage with the city to secure the necessary right-of-way for the project and finishing up in 2024. And then the project is scheduled for advertising construction in either late 2024 or early 2025, with constructions begin in 2025. And of course, this would need to be coordinated with the city utility project, as German was mentioning earlier. As we mentioned earlier, the estimated cost of our construction is approximately $7.4 So before I open the hearing to questions and comments, let me explain the hearing procedure. As stated previously, the purpose of this hearing is to receive your input this evening, and as the plans are not yet complete, we may not be able to answer all of your questions or respond to your comments at this time, but certainly we'll do the best we can. We ask that anyone who wishes to have his or her comments entered into the hearing transcript, please use the microphone that we can have passed around for you. Identify yourself by your name and affiliation and whether you are an voter or just, you know, a concerned citizen, and if necessary, if needed, you could spell your last name. This is necessary in order for us to obtain a verbatim transcript for tonight's hearing as required by law. Finally, it is normal procedure to ask elected officials to offer their comments first. Are there any federal or state or local officials who would like to speak at this time? Okay. This hearing is now open to the public, and we welcome your questions and comments at this time. Now feel free to raise your hand and we can move the microphone over to you.
Hello? Excuse me. My name is Lisa Santagate, S-A-N-T-A-G-A-T-E, and my address is 221 Shertliff Street, which is at the intersection of Shertliff, Marlborough, and Broadway. And in reference to the design plan for the portion from Fifth Street to City Hall Ave, I had some questions about whether or not there would be, I saw no signal at City Hall Ave and Marlborough and Broadway there, so I'm just trying to imagine how the traffic will flow. You're going to make it two-way in front of City Hall, in front of our home, but there's going to be traffic coming up from City Hall Ave, because that's going to be two-way now. Marlborough Street is currently one-way going down, so I just don't know when you come up from Washington Ave on City Hall Ave or when you come to City Hall Ave and Broadway, if there are plans for a signal.
Yep, so we'll start with the intersection of... So we'll start with the intersection here. This is Marlborough, Shertliff, City Hall Ave, and Broadway. So earlier in the presentation, I mentioned the intersections that aren't signalized will have beacons, and this is one of them. They'll look kind of like this guy, but they'll be on a pole, not on, not on a, not on a wire, so they'll have a nice black powder-coated pole that looks nice in the area. But they will flash yellow for, for... But, but they will flash yellow for, for, for the traffic that is removing, and red for the traffic that needs to stop. In addition, the left-turn pocket is set up so that it allows for people to stop, see the traffic coming towards them, and then make a left turn, similarly like you would on a, if you were in a suburban shopping center entrance on a highway, and it has a turnpocket just for that. We recognize that that's different than what it is today. We took a look at the traffic volumes that are, that are here and what would be here. One of the hard things to imagine is that not everyone who currently has to use this intersection and go down City Hall Ave will have to anymore. So a lot of them will just go straight. And that will reduce the amount of vehicles that are actually using the intersection going on to City Hall. City Hall will remain one-way towards Washington. And Washington will remain one-way towards Broadway. It'll be one-way.
Oh, that is different from what we had originally heard from the reimagining, what I thought we had voted on. So that makes it a little, a little safer in my mind. I was thinking that City Hall Ave was two-way.
Exactly, so as we got under, as we got underway with design and were exploring different treatments for this intersection, we did ask Jonathan and his team to look at traffic signals here, both if City Hall Ave was a two-way and if it was a one-way. I think ultimately, the recommendation from HNTB is the safest configuration that we could have right now would be kinda what's shown here with City Hall being a one-way, which differs from the plan, as well as this new left-hand turn lane and some of these pedestrian safety measures. But it will be new for folks. As Jonathan mentioned, a lot of the traffic that, you know, circulates around right now will continue to go around City Hall. And we do expect that, you know, the traffic volumes will be such that even making this left-hand turn from Broadway onto City Hall Ave should be pretty seamless for drivers.
Well, absolutely.
Okay, just to carry on on my property, if you don't mind. Because the portion of Broadway will be two-way in front of City Hall, I wondered if there had been any analysis... I know it's quite hard to know how many people, how many cars traveling will turn left in Bellingham Square onto Fifth Street. I'm just thinking of the environmental impact of increased traffic because the Broadway in front of my home will now be two-way, so there'll be that much more traffic. And I don't know how you can analyze how much more, I suppose, until it's there. But I, or maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you have a way to know what that's going to be like.
Um, so to some degree, we can figure out what people are more likely to do. Some people will continue to go around on, on City Hall and go over to Washington. Particularly, the bus route will continue to go around, which, you know, it's fairly frequent, so it's quite a, quite a, quite a large number. But there will be a number of, a number of vehicles that now go straight through. To answer your question on noise, generally, the ambient city that noise doesn't really change with that. Yeah, I, I don't have an answer for you on that. Larry, you wanna?
There's, you know, if noise, well, this, this will be a job that is performed mostly during the, during the daytime hours. There wouldn't be any nighttime unless there was a special request for, you know, if there was some kind of trench work that, that had to be done during the day. And if there was a specific issue where, you know, less traffic volume at a certain time, if there was a better time to perform that, that, that activity, then something like that would have to go through a special request. But we, but we generally...
No, it wasn't about that. It was about increased traffic from vehicles, not your construction or noise. It was more that there are gonna be more emissions in front of my home.
Right, so we do, absolutely. So we, Jonathan's team did look at, you know, what the projected traffic flow would look like under this. One thing we can do after this meeting is go back to that, confirm it, and then get you up an actual figure as to what that change would particularly look like.
And then what we do is if it becomes untenable once, you know, what, what can we do after? A lot of this is guessing. And so then what action can we take if it turns into a bigger environmental issue than we think it will now?
Absolutely. And, and just one more thing on, on the traffic. So yes, more vehicles will go through on Broadway in that direction. But keep in mind that because Bellingham allows people from Hawthorne to turn directly onto Broadway, you're not going to get those people who are rushing to circulate around City Hall anymore. They're all going to just make that direct U-turn. So that will offset to some degree that other traffic.
My name is Roberto. I am an intern from La Colaborativa Understand Program. I had a question mostly about like the new intersection. So is there a possibility that it could increase accidents given that there's more traffic coming in from different ways?
Now, so one of the interesting things about this intersection is that it has a lot of legs, right? But in the end, it has three specific entering approaches. Hawthorne, Washington Ave, and then it will also have Broadway now too. Each of those will move on its own, so there'll only be one movement going through the intersection at a time. Just by the sheer angles that they're coming in, they can't, none of them can go concurrently. So when, when one approach is going, it pretty much has its, all of its movements to itself. And then there's a period of time in between when the traffic can clear out, and then the next, the next approach can go. And then, one of the really nice parts about the way this is set up is sometimes, depending on what approach is going, certain crosswalks can be open to pedestrians to move across. And then every signal cycle, all pedestrians will be able to use all crosswalks for a period of time exclusively just for them. So if you wanna walk from one corner all the way to the other corner, you can do that.
Hey, my name is Greg Zelt. That's Z as in zebra, E L, and two T's like Thomas. I don't live in Chelsea, but I do work on Lower Broadway. That's one of my clients, to be safe. So I really appreciate you guys trying to make this whole area safer. One question I would ask, since we are doing all this construction, would it be possible to raise the pedestrian crosswalks a la what European cities have? I know it's not exactly the standard in the Boston area, but if we're doing all this work, I do think that would be really nice for having the cars actually slow down so they don't hit anybody as they're crossing the street, as opposed to having people actually walk down into the street. Cars actually go up, they would slow down. Pedestrians would be safer. Just an idea, if that's something we could try or do.
For some of the side streets, we could certainly look at that. It'll have a number of caveats associated with that. So we've talked to emergency services, the MBTA, as well as the Public City Council, as I say, and a lot of what can go in and what can't in terms of vertical elements or, or lowered. I know that on Chelsea Square, on Second Street... Man, I'm good at this. So on Chelsea Square on Second Street, the, that section of roadway is actually being elevated there to kinda connect the square together and make it more whole. So that's certainly something we can look at. At some of the side streets, I would say, along Broadway itself, because of the volume of cars, because of the MBTA buses, because of its need as an emergency route for a lot of emergency vehicles and all the delivery trucks that come through and all of that stuff, as well as all the people who live directly above it and hearing all of those vehicles go up and down on, on various elements. It may not be the best candidate for that kind of thing. However, on some of those side streets where the volumes are a little bit lower, we can certainly look at some of that. Now, there's also a caveat of drainage that we have to look at to see if we could do that, because when, once you put that vertical barrier in there, water has to go somewhere.
Are there any other questions at this time?
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
We have noticed, and I hear from my home quite often, the screech of brakes. The intersection of Shertliff Street, Marlborough, and Broadway wasn't in your plan, but there have been, and I have seen firsthand, many pedestrians hit there. So I'm surprised it didn't come up. And so I wondered if they were gonna, other than that flashing beacon, which I assume will be in the middle of that intersection from where City Hall Ave meets Broadway. I'm wondering about the traffic that comes from Shertliff Street and merges onto Broadway at Marlborough. That's where the Civil War Memorial is and a big bus stop. And although I have worked with my city councilor and traffic and parking to have crosswalks painted there, it's still dangerous. And it's also the site of a bus stop for the schoolchildren in the morning. So there are two bus stops. One at Shertliff and Grove, and then one block away at Marlborough and Broadway and Shertliff. So that seems like a dangerous area, but it doesn't seem like it's entered this conversation.
Yeah, I'll run through the improvements there in a little more detail. So at one of the intersections farther towards Chelsea Square, we talked about those rectangular rapid flashing beacons. The crosswalk that you see across from the memorial over to City Hall, right over here, and then over to City Hall, will have that push-button flashing beacon available, so... So if you were crossing Broadway, you'd have that. In addition, we'll make improvements to this entire block in front of, in front of the monument, mainly widening out the sidewalk a bit there. And a lot of this was compromised back and forth discussions with the city on what, what best improvements are for this location. So right now, that's smaller than what the MBTA wants for a bus stop. And by widening it out, there'll be more space. A lot of times when a bus stop gets crowded, people scur around by walking in the street and so forth. This will be widened out to the standard width that the MBTA needs to have a bus stop. It'll also be marked, which you can see by that thick line right there. The bus stop itself will be marked, so I assume this is the spot you're talking about for where schoolchildren get picked up?
Actually, there's one where Grove Street meets Shertliff Street on the corner of Grove and Shertliff. Up, further up at the end, where the end of your white, I guess you were saying you were extending, where the bus stop is, that solid white line, where your white line meets Shertliff Street at the end of the yellow, that small crosswalk, that is where many pedestrians have been hit. Because when you come down Shertliff Street, you are looking to see traffic coming down Broadway. And so people often don't look, they look to the left and not to the right, and pedestrians are hit.
Okay, um, we will take that back and, and we'll take a look.
Yeah, but there should be data in the, from traffic and injury.
Yep, certainly.
But a lot of it is, there's a fear of under-traffic coming down Shertliff. It's trying to get across to go down to City Hall Ave. And they gun it as soon as they see an opening without relooking for pedestrians.
Okay, so one of the benefits of having this turnpocket here now is that they don't have to cross the entire white in one shot. So all you need to do to get to City Hall Ave at this point with, with the new configuration would be to come from here, cross one lane of traffic, stop there, and then you can wait for your next movement on the other side. So really, you're just looking over your shoulder for one movement. Understood.
There's also gonna be oncoming traffic coming the other way, so they're not just gonna be able to...
Gun it across, yeah.
Is that island, that island that is now there in front, where you have to, where Broadway comes one way, the other way now, that island will go because it's gonna be two-way traffic.
Yeah, it's actually, right now, just Jersey barriers.
Yeah, very, right, but it's still, serves as that.
So on Shertliff Street in particular, one thing we can look at is sort of, is it like, sorry? About at least one more hearings. So one thing we can look at coming down Shertliff Street is how we can sort of force drivers to focus on pedestrians that aren't coming up on the corner there around the monument. And so that could be a combination of signage, pavement markings. We may also wanna consider some type of speed table or speed humps down there so folks aren't flying all the way down towards the crosswalk.
It's more the pedestrians coming from Marlborough because people don't turn to the right too because they're concentrating on the traffic coming out.
Coming from the left.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So I just think that needs some attention.
Yeah, absolutely, no, I'm definitely agreeing. We can have Jonathan and his team take it careful.
Jonathan, would the, would those side street crosswalks be in consideration to be raised? Because if, if the vehicles know that they're raised, then they wouldn't be able to accelerate at that speed going leaving the street.
Yeah, certainly, and, you know, same considerations apply for that, especially like the...
A median barrier or something.
Yeah, especially the grade of the roadway in those areas. It is, it does drop off a little bit on those, on those roadways away from Broadway too. But we can definitely look at that. We've, we've done those on roadways with, with grades like what's on Shertliff and Marlborough before, so it's not unheard of.
Yeah, specifically, I think we can anticipate that there'll be other work right now because with summer tunnel exposed on the weekends, that's where everybody comes now to cut through. They come down Grove and onto Shertliff. So our weekends are just full of traffic in that particular area right now. And I know we can anticipate that there'll be another project that will divert, and so I think we need to look at it. We have to anticipate confusion more than deal with the problem after. And you guys are doing great with the hearing. Alex, I think you said you're bad at this. Okay. I feel, I feel hurt.
Alex emphasized the word.
Yes, I emphasize the word.
No, it's, you know, it's a little intimidating to have as many people in this.
See?
You can dress casual and you come next time. But no, thank you.
Don't worry about me.
I, I appreciate this. I, I'm sorry that there aren't elected officials here and the police. I think that would have been good, but this isn't a boldly hearing. But this isn't the only hearing. This is just the 25% hearing?
Yeah, so. Sorry, Anna. So there will be additional hearings as part of the project that are required under the Mass DOT design process. But in addition to that, the city, Mass DOT, and H and T B will be holding a number of smaller community meetings this spring and summer. So we'll be doing some that are in specific buildings along downtown to meet with tenants and residents of those buildings. The Chamber of Commerce was already gracious to host us, offer one for the small business community. We expect to hold a number more. And then we'll be holding a lot of different outdoor programming when it's warm out, so things like the table in Bellingham Square to collect input from residents and share information about the project. So be a lot going on this spring, summer of 2023 on the project from a design perspective as well as from an outreach perspective. And then just one thing on the RSA is when Alex mentioned that a lot of civic partners participate in it, one of those partners is the police. So we walked the entire corridor with the police, and a lot of their concerns are where these improvements came from. So they may not be here tonight, but they were a big participant in the impetus of the project.
My name's Anna Haddingham. I'm the director of youth programs. Look, Loretta, this is actually not my question, but some of our STEM youth leaders wanted to know a little bit more about accessibility and how, what the impact would be for those, for example, wheelchair users, the elderly, and not just in terms of safety, but also what the experience for them would be like if there's different materials being used on the sidewalks and how this project would make the area more welcoming for folks of all abilities.
So one of the big things about this project is that it was initially just for the intersections themselves to improve the intersections. That's where the conflicts are. By the time we got done laying out how the intersections would look and how the curb extensions met the existing sidewalks, what we realized was we were just leaving small sections of brick in between brand-new concrete intersections along the way. So the decision was made to, within the project limits, remove that brick and replace it with concrete, which is ADA accessible. One part of the project will be to take that, the slope of the sidewalk from the back of the buildings all the way up to the curb line and make sure that that's at the right cross slope from the building to the curb line as well, so that people don't feel like they're tilting over when they're walking just along the sidewalk. As far as the experience going through the intersection, you can see right here that each of the intersections has a ramp. The ramps are designed specifically to point people from one side to the other. So each wheelchair ramp or pedestrian curb ramp has a panel on it that points to the other side of the intersection. And generally, what we try to do is direct the users of those ramps from one side to the other. And obviously, it's not just for people who need help getting across the intersection from their abilities, it's also for people who have a stroller or pulling their luggage or have a flat tire on their bike or whatever have you that forces them to, or need a little help getting across the intersection. The intersections themselves, the traffic signals will have all of the things that you see on newer intersections throughout the city and other cities in the area. So there'll be countdown clocks, and there'll be accessible PED signals that count down for you and let you know when the light has changed and when it's safe to cross if you can't see it yourself.
Acknowledge, this isn't specifically something Mass DOT can fix, which I understand, but I'm glad to hear you guys are working with Chelsea PD, because I guess my comment would be, working here for a while, I feel like the biggest traffic concern I see on Lower Broadway is the classic hazard light parking maneuver thing, which tends to block up the streets a lot, both the bus lane, which is really unfortunate, and also the drive lane for personal automobiles. Is it possible that you guys can work with Chelsea PD or whatever necessary party to try to enforce double parking and try to prevent people from blocking through lanes with their personal parking legal situation?
So I'll let Alex dig in a little deeper on this in a second, but generally, we have the parking spaces laid out from 25%, but we intentionally haven't finalized the use of all of the parking spaces, whether they're 15-minute spots or two-hour spots or whatever have you, or drop-off spots or loading zones or what have you within the corridor. At the same time, the city has pointed out locations where loading and unloading is a concern, and there have been some curb line changes in the design, and there will continue to be as we progress to make sure that those are built in. As part of the bus pilot, we analyzed the amount of double parking violations that occurred pre-bus pilot versus post, and I can tell you that that number has reduced considerably as a result of the pilot. People are just less likely to park in something that says bus only. And the big giant bus behind their car that's really mad at them is a really great deterrent. So just echoing Jonathan's comments, you know, as part of the design process, we are comprehensively looking at curbside management, which not only has impacts on traffic flow and safety, but also just residents' day-to-day lives and how conveniently they can access their favorite restaurant or small business. So this will include loading zones, 15-minute parking zones, longer-term parking, as well as specialized areas such as areas for the police. But at an operational level, in conjunction with our new police chief, Chief Hogan, the city is actively exploring methods of enhancing enforcement in the downtown to reduce double parking and ensure that a lot of the double parking that does occur right now, you know, is managed and doesn't occur particularly after this project is built. Luckily, with the institution of the bus lane, double parking has been reduced to some degree, but if I drive downtown on a Sunday, I still see it left and right as many of you do. So the police chief is committed to working with the traffic division as well as his officers along with the city to manage double parking, to cut down on the amount that you see and a lot of the safety implications.
I had another question mostly about the bus stops. It was just like if the bus stop shelters will also be implemented into this new design or bus stops will remain the same as they are? Because most of them are just like, they just, they, they're just like, it just has a sign there that it's a bus stop, but they're not like, they don't have a shelter or anything to make them feel comfortable for people waiting for the bus.
Great, that's a great question. So across the project corridor throughout the downtown, we will be looking at replacing and adding bus shelters. So the MBTA, in conjunction with the city, recently reviewed some new shelter design options that they've put out. In addition to those, the city obtained a grant recently from the Bar Foundation and the Institute for Transportation and Development Policy to design a customized bus shelter in the downtown. This purpose of the project is really to figure out how can we design a bus shelter that prioritizes people's comfort and things like having a phone charging station or cutting down the noise that you experience while you're waiting for the bus. So this would be something that, you know, is going to be created over the course of the summer with local artists. We can definitely touch base with you afterwards if you're interested in joining it. But we hope that this will be sort of one example that we'll do down at Broadway and Third, and from there, we may be able to create these in additional locations, something that isn't your fairly typical bus stop, but really does have more features so that you can be comfortable and feel safe while waiting for the bus. So yeah, bare minimum, we're replacing the shelters with upgraded new shelters, and then on top of that, we're going to be working with local artists to create a customized shelter, and hopefully it doesn't just stop at that one location, but we can do that in multiple locations in the downtown.
Okay, are there any further questions at this time? Okay, so how will we keep you informed? Well, locally, the city, as Alex said, will have some pop-up events in the spring and summer period and stakeholder engagement and continue to solicit feedback and comments throughout the length of the design. This is the only public hearing, the formal hearing, at any time during the design if the city feels that, you know, another meeting is warranted, that would be in the, more in line with what we call a public informational meeting, which is, sometimes those are called upon at a later appointment in design, and certainly if one is needed, then those are certainly an option and definitely less formal. So there are several ways to reach out to Mass DOT going forward. You can email comments to the email address listed on the slide. This is our preferred method. And you can submit and mail formal written comments to the address shown on with the Attention to Project Management section and the project file number 609532. You can visit the Mass DOT Design Public Hearing website page by simply scanning the QR code shown on the screen or the code that is shown on the public hearing flyer, which is near the handouts. A copy of the handout is provided on the website, and formal comments can be mailed with the form on the last page of the handout. Hard copies are located near the signing sheet, as I said. Comments received within 10 business days will become included with the official hearing transcript. I'd like to thank the city for their assistance this evening, having great knowledge of the area. It's always great to have local support and, you know, Alex and Jordan, thank you very much. And I would like to thank all of you for attending the presentation this evening. Going forward, your comments and concerns will be considered for the design of this project. Please enjoy the rest of the evening. I now declare the hearing closed. The time is 7:56 PM.